Mr. Patterson would do identification, please.
That's great. Lord gracious, Heavenly Father, we have come to you at this time thanking you for your abundant blessings that you've given us, Lord. Thank you for watching over us and taking care of us. Thank you, Lord, for the people that are here tonight that are interested in our community, Lord. And thank you for just loving us beyond measure. We ask, Lord, that you be with this meeting. Help us as commissioners to conduct it in appropriate manner, Lord, to be fair and honest and just, and help us to be all that you would want us to be. Forgive us of our sins, we ask these things all in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, in the best world, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, our unfinished business is to approve the minutes of the January 28th regular Board of Commissioners. Commissioners, please let me know when you're ready to move forward.
I've read the minutes, I have no doubts.
I also have no guesses, Captain.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Minutes are approved. Okay, public commentary. Please, if you're interested in speaking, raise your hand, be recognized, come to the microphone and tell us who you are and where you live in Fannin County. Yes, sir?
I'm Ralph Gardner, I live in Blue Ridge. I just want to report, especially to the post, that the full year figures for the lodging tax are in. And we came up with $1.999 million. It's roughly a million dollars at a 50-50 split. Roughly a million dollars for a chamber who promotes our tourism, for the county. And what I wanted, I recall a couple, three years ago, the idea that the chamber was receiving a million dollars was just out of the question, but the tourism has boosted the amount they received back to a million despite the fact that we have changed the allotment from 70% down to a 50-50. The state mandates 40% of lodging tax be designated for the promotion of tourism. And with respect for the wonderful job that they are doing, and also underscoring the importance of that diesel locomotive here in Blue Ridge, nevertheless, I want to suggest that we drop the allotment to the chamber to 40%. And I'm able to make that easy in my mind by the fact that you all have boosted the lodging tax from 5% to 6%. So very likely, even at 40%, the chamber will have, oh, very close to a million, and in any event, well in excess of the 800,000 figure that I came up with three, four years ago when I did research comparing our county with what other counties up here in the hills are giving for the promotion of tourism. So please consider that, especially at a time when we're looking around for money for our library. And I thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Who would like to be next? Yes, sir?
I'm Joe Webb, I'm from the Dial area, south of the county. I'd like to continue what I was saying at the last meeting, and one is that we don't answer questions really is unfortunate, is not right. That we basically hold public comments to three minutes when basically we don't take up 10 minutes of an hour and a half agenda is not right. A handout I gave you last week had the chairman of the Union County offering advice and comment and answers to questions citizens had on some fairly complicated subdivision law and this, that, or the other. It seems like we do the same thing. This week I'd like to continue that thing, which is basically, Union County basically gives public answers to their questions. I'm also going to give you something tonight from Dawson County and Pickens County where their chairmans are also basically given the public information. Here's an interesting thing in the first of this article. This is Billy Thurman's third year as Dawson County's commission chairman after being his term in 2017 will end in 2020. He reflects on the past year and what he saw as accomplishments for the board and shared his comments. And look, this is in a newspaper interview published in the newspaper. I'm suggesting that we absolutely have to become more transparent and more open to answering citizens' questions and literally having information shared among the three board members so we can make appropriate decisions. That we're getting to all these things on the admin building and the library literally eight months after the purchase is not good business. So I'm asking us basically to change the way we do business, and I'm asking basically if we're unable to do that, please don't rerun your office. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to be next? Anyone? Okay, public commentary is closed. Item number three under new business is a variance request from Keith Kerr that we table for two weeks to try to work out some differences between the parties. And you two gentlemen were here the last time. Were you able to do that?
No, we were basically told that the decision had already been made and we had nothing to say about it.
Well, more importantly...
If you want to address this, please come up to the address the board, please. And I'm sorry, your name was...
My name is Robert Morris.
There's Morris over there.
Robert, what's your position?
I'm a full-time homeowner in Hattan Heights.
And he's on the board.
I'm on the board.
On the board?
The homeowner.
Is the homeowner association owner there, owner here? I mean, is he the president here?
No, he's not. The president's not here. He's out of town. I apologize taking this one.
That's okay.
I think we got along very well with the building inspector, but he brought up a point, and let me also specify, we have no objection to this house being built, none whatsoever. It's important, I think, to the tax base and to our homeownership. But he said, "Well, your place is probably sitting back as far as this variance is calling for." Well, I bought the house already built, I had to assume at the time, all the i's have been dotted, t's have been crossed, and it was all that property. So I wouldn't have any idea how far back it's set. So I said, "Wait a minute, let me understand this then. Because my house might have possibly been set back," or not set back as far as it should have, you're going to use that for justification to allow that one to also be set back? It makes no sense. Right? It just makes no sense. You have a law in the books that says this is a distance back from the road, it should be set. We're only asking that they adhere to that. That's all. And it's a safety issue more than anything else, because if there's no parking for cars within some distance off of the road, things happen, and we've had them happen. So we're just asking that they subscribe to the code as it is written, and not use the fact that another house may have been done improperly as justification to this house being done. We're calling it improper. That's all we're with this one.
Do you have any comments?
Follow the variance, follow the code.
You have any questions, Commissioner, any comments on this?
So indeed, your house is as close as the variance is being requested?
I don't know, he was just making an ethical judgment. He said you may possibly be as much. I never took the time, like I said, when I purchased the place already built, I had to assume that it had met code in all areas, otherwise it would be standing there.
This was before the building inspector was even required?
Right, and that's why variance is a variance.
It's an older home.
There's special exceptions in certain instances in which the county is allowed to permit with certain lots, I mean, you know, it's a case-by-case basis.
Well, my point is, can you justify another place being improperly placed just because another one might have been improperly placed? Can you just...
But it won't be improperly, I mean...
Once you get a variance, no.
And then this board is in order to do that.
That's why you've got codes, that's why you have inspections. And this is simply a matter of convenience. We're not talking about my building house, we don't have any of that at all. But we've had issues in the past with proximity to that road that actually created dangers in certain cases. It only takes one. It only takes one. So that's why we're asking...
Are you speaking to the parking issue you had at one time?
In that area, yes. You would have owners, absentee owners, come in, overload the place. We've had some of these units, but they brought in 27 cars. And, you know, we've had to track down the owner and tell him to get the cars out or we're talking.
But my view on that is, that can happen whether you're 30 feet off the road or 20 feet off the road. I mean, if I have enough people in my house, I'm about 1,000 feet off the road, they could still come out into the road. As far as the county's concerned, I mean, I would think, in my view, the 15 feet of difference, or whatever that difference is, footage-wise, it's not going to, it's not going to help or hurt your concern, in my belief. If your concern is truly people parking in the road, that's not a concern for commissioners.
Well, it is for the standpoint, we had an incident some years back where in one of the bigger units where he was held a skeeter, letting them park anywhere, they blocked the road, EMS tried to get, couldn't get up there. These four guys had to get out in 28-degree weather with a gurney, and went out there and pulled the guy down and said, "You know, if this happens again, don't expect to see it." I don't want to see that possibility even show up again. Then we have renters that come in there, there's people that have small kids, a lot of these renters come in at 1:00 in the morning, or they come in at 5:00 in the afternoon, or they come in at 8:00 in the morning, whatever. And little kids, being little kids, I'm talking four, five, six, go running all around those woods, they think it's terrific stuff. And these people are jockeying around trying to park. 15 feet can make the difference in them spotting those kids and not spotting them.
And I understand, I'm just trying to let you know, my point on, is it's not, my view is not that we can't police how many people can park at a house.
Oh, no, no, no.
So to do with the variance, in my opinion, the variance in your issue is a complete separate ordeal.
But we agree to disagree.
And I'm fine with that.
That's right.
I just, I just want you to know, my stance is, we can't police how many people can park in a house.
No, we're not asking that.
Whether you're subdivision or any subdivision across the county, that's my point.
But many of these cases, these people just, the spot, the spaces there, and they just pull in. When you bring it to attention, I'll move the car later.
But I think our point is, right now, if you grant the variance, there's going to be X number of cars that can park there. If they did it in accordance with the code, we would add more parking to minimize that risk.
They'll wedge in as many cars as they can have.
So if we can get six in there now...
Let's try to get eight.
But we could get eight if they built it correctly, that's two less cars that are going to create a pinch point.
Have you all discussed this as a homeowners association?
Yes.
I mean, we see variances all the time. All these houses built, and they're all the same way. I mean, they're no different than yours and the 20, 40 others that we look at all the time. You know, I would look at it as a homeowner association issue that, you know, before anything happens, there has to be a rule that, you know, we have to keep things safe.
But that's why we're here.
That's why we're here as homeowners association representatives.
This is pivotal to keeping it safe. If they build it in accordance with regulations...
Safer, you're saying, safer.
Safer.
Correct. I've been up there and looked at it, and I've heard that a contractor said he's going to do a circle drive, will forgive you more room, okay, in the lay of the land, and you've also got a little piece, just a little bit above...
They'll have a little flat parking spot.
Yeah, right, right. So that's your parking too, yeah, well, two or three cars, but you know, how much is enough for you guys? And where do we draw the line? That's what Mr. Johnson's saying.
All we're asking is just that, that safety factor, that's all. Is it safer for a car to be parked right on the street, or is it safer to be backed five or eight feet from the street?
You can find that anywhere in this county. I think that's even acceptable. And a lot of it is just neighbors, trying to work with neighbors, get along, and some people don't want to get along, so...
No, you have my complete agreement on that. That's all over the place. All we're saying is, where do we finally draw a line? Where does it stop? The code is the code, and we're just asking to maintain what the code says.
If we don't allow variances in this county, we'll bring that building industry, which employs a lot of good local people, will bring that to a screeching halt, and I'm not going to...
Well, I don't see...
We've looked at it, I've looked at your location, and this is nothing inconsistent with what we've been approving since I've been here.
Well, what we're talking about basically is about $2,500 worth of bills that have been backed. This is a cost thing from the builder's standpoint, there's nothing with that. This has nothing to do with principle or anything else.
But you understand, that's not for us to decide. That's not, we're not, and it could be a home where there are two cars there, I mean, we don't know who's going to occupy the home. It could be a retired couple, it could be a retired person, or it... We can't look into the future and tell what it's going to be.
No, you can't, that's why you have codes.
But every lot in this county is different. There's different elevations, with different topography to every subdivision, to every lot, and that's why we allow variances. And that's about all.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Appreciate you, gentlemen, coming in.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, I'm ready to move forward to this variance effect. I'll make the motion that we approve the variance for Mr. Keith Kerr to place his house 30 feet from the edge of Oak Ridge Way and 35 feet from the center line of Oak Ridge Way. I'll make the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Variance is approved. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Item number four, Ms. Sherri Morris, Director of the Fannin County Family Connection. Come on down, Sherri, how are you doing?
Good, how are you? I'm Sherri Morris, Executive Director of Fannin County Family Connection. Thank you for allowing some time on me agenda this evening to discuss family connection concerns. Most everyone in the county knows family connection is the location for the feed pantry for the county, but we do a host of other activities. We work with our schools for outreach on underage consumption of alcohol, and we're currently partnering with our schools on literacy project. We teach darkness to light program in which adults learn how to recognize the signs of sexual abuse and molestation in our youth and how to help our youth who are victimized. We host quarterly blood drives and we host a quarterly free mammogram services from Memorial Hospital in Chattanooga. We also serve as a valuable source of knowledge of resources for those who are less fortunate in our county, and daily we help families find needed resources. We have a free clothing closet and collect blankets and linens. If a family has a fire, we help with all sorts of resources to get the family back on their feet. We offer free firewood during the cool months and we give away many, many coats during the winter season. We offer homeless day services whereby those who are homeless can cook themselves a hot meal, take a shower, wash their clothes, use our phone and internet services. This year, we're adding free mini health fairs for our clients, and we will conduct our second poverty simulation, which helps others understand the challenge of living in need day in and day out. And of course, we offer the feed pantry, which serves people who earn an income that is 130% of the federal poverty level or below. On average, one in six Fannin County residents utilize the resources of the feed pantry. In 2019, Family Connection served 17,133 people. That number is a 7% increase over 2018. If our numbers continue tracking as they are currently, we will serve over 20,000 clients this fiscal year. Our ask for tonight is that the Fannin County Board of Commissioners serve once again as our fiscal agent to receive the funds from our state organization, Georgia Family Connection Partnership. The Board of Commissioners have graciously served as our fiscal agent for many years, and it is now time to ask for the 20 and 21 fiscal year. Also, the Board provides some funding each year for the operation of Family Connection. We are very grateful for the help from the commission budget and always put those dollars to good use in serving the citizens of Fannin County. When I was here last year, I reported that Family Connection was in need of a physical location. I am pleased to report that through the generosity of many people, we are now located in a newly refurbished building with an expanded pantry and a beautiful 2,500-square-foot community room that is available for use of the county residents. We are grateful to all who helped make this possible. Again, thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration of our request to serve as our fiscal agent again this year.
Got any comments, Commissioner Johnson?
No, I just appreciate what you and your, what you do.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
A lot of it goes on some, but...
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Very good service.
Mr. Patterson, any comments?
Sherri, again, I just want to echo the thoughts, y'all do a great job, and without you, we would really see the effects of hardship. So thank you again for all you did.
Sign this for him, well, we got a vote on it.
Yeah, yeah.
South County, these guys are going to go with, I don't know. Commissioners, I'm going to ask for a motion that we continue our past history of being the fiscal agent for the Fannin County Family Connection. I'll ask for a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Sherri, you want us to sign this now, or are you going to have...
Absolutely.
You still got Anna working out there?
I do.
You still have her blue line?
I do. She still has a blue line.
You might tell people that, how many years has Anna been working out there, almost daily?
Anna is a volunteer who comes to the pantry four days a week. She's been doing it for five and a half years. And she has an area in the pantry that's called Anna's Corner, and you kind of don't go back there.
It'd be kind of nice if some of our friends in the newspaper would go out and maybe take a picture, but would that embarrass her?
It would terribly embarrass her.
Well, if they do, don't say anything about my name. Just save you a trip coming back.
Thank you so much. I think there's two pages.
Two pages.
Have to do that, dug in on for the government, you know. Thank you, commissioners, we certainly appreciate you doing this for us.
How long have you been there, Sherri?
Four and a half years now. I've got it from last year. I'm sure she did it. Thanks.
Thank you, Sherri. Okay, item number five, Mr. Eddie O'Neill.
It's about the last time I was here about subcontracting part of the building at Tomboy Park and dropping down one employee to offset the cost of that. I have two bids secured, one bid from GBD for $3,200 a month, one from Greens Lawn Service for $2,400 a month for those services through the mow season. I would recommend the lowest bid.
What was that first bid?
$3,200.
I do use that lowest bid, Greens Lawn Service.
And again, this would be a one-year addition to what you already have, and then hopefully next year would be another two-year bidding. From what I'm hearing, they're doing an excellent job for y'all already.
Yes, they do it for maintenance job with the river parks, yeah.
The one that's at Jazzworth?
I think they moved up here from Jazzworth, again, I was originally from Jazzworth, but he's moving, he's doing, running the lawn service here.
Okay, any questions, commissioners, on this? If not, I'll make the motion that we approve Greens Lawn Service at a rate of $2,400 a month, and this will be seasonal.
Correct.
And we'll marry it up with the other contract when it goes out for bids next year for everything on the two-year. I'll make the motion, we approve Greens Lawn Service, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Kristy, come on up, you've got an appointment, do you leave for us, then you have something else to report?
And I'm going to go over here with my presentation.
You want to tell us about the appointment that you...
So Darren Danner was one of my board members, and he was a board member that was a part of the school system, which is an important partnership for our board. Lucas Roof got put into a new position to support CTAE for the school system and STEM, and Darren recommended having Lucas come on the board because we're already working together closely with different meetings. So that's the request, is to change Darren with Lucas.
And Darren's term was scheduled to begin July 2021, is that...
I think that's correct. I think that's correct. So he would, Lucas would just take over.
So Lucas would be to continue and complete that term. Okay. Any questions on Lucas Roof's appointment?
I have none.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion that we approve Mr. Lucas Roof to fill the appointment at the Fannin County Development Authority of Mr. Darren Daners. I'll ask for a motion for approval.
Make a motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Okay. Thank you.
I have a few topics to discuss tonight. I'm going to try to project. There's a microphone right there. No, the other one, the hand one. Sorry. I'll first give you a recap of economic development 2019 briefly. We'll talk to you about census 2020 and then Georgia's broadband ready program, and then one of our buildings that we own. So, the Development Authority has two publicly owned buildings that we manage and we lease, and we are currently fully leased. So, one of the buildings is located on Ada Street and it's 40,000 square feet with three tenants. Those tenants are ANS Clothing, Pulse Medical, and Lake Shore Logistics. Lake Shore Logistics is in FedEx operation, and they moved in last year. We also have 20,000 square feet on Highway 5 across from Tri-State EMC and Ed Supplies located there. Adjacent to both pieces of, both buildings are about four and a half to five acres of land that we also own. So that could be used to build a building to support business or for sale to a specific company that would help with our economy in the county. So those are available, but as far as building space goes, we are at, we are fully leased as of this past year, which is great. And then, all of the businesses that are tenants of Fannin County-owned buildings support 90, over 90 jobs in the county. This, this picture of the county shows where businesses opened in 2019. And this information comes through the Secretary of State office, and they had, from their office, 98 businesses. So this just shows the gist of where they opened within the county. We don't have business licenses in Fannin County, so we can't necessarily track every business that opens, where they open, et cetera. But this is a good indication. I do track everybody that comes through my office, calls with a question, needs assistance with whatever it may be. And we supported 100 new jobs in the county, or over 100 new jobs in 2019. And then, I like to make a point that sometimes, somebody will come into the office with a big plan to start a business that may take three or four years. So in addition to the 100 jobs that we could track that were created in 2019, there's potential of 350 more jobs in the future based on potential new businesses that would open in the future. Okay, I want to touch on education because it has a huge impact on economic development. And the Development Authority has a really great partnership with the school system. Last year, we created the Fannin Youth Initiative Program with the support of the school system and brought students into the county, showed them all of the assets that we have here in Fannin County, including job opportunities, brought them to the courthouse, and talked about where you go to pay your taxes, where you go to vote, where you go to look for a deed, et cetera. It was a great success in 2019, and we have 14 students who have started the program in 2020. And always thankful for our partnership with the school system. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit more in depth about census 2020. It's important to all of us in this room, especially us leaders in the community. Commissioner Hilton asked me to lead the Census Complete Count Committee for Fannin County. And so what I'm talking to you about is not census jobs, it's census awareness in Fannin County. So why you need to complete your census survey. So the census is basically a population count for the entire nation, but important to Fannin County because census 2020, 28, excuse me, census 2010 numbers indicated that we were around 24,000. And I am going to make the assumption that our population has grown by a bit since then. So, the state of Georgia has indicated that every person that is counted in your census, in the county census number, could equate to $2,300 in potential federal funding. So, the federal government can look at your population count to determine how funds are distributed. So it matters to our emergency services, it matters to our roads, it matters to our education system. I know that when my department goes to write a grant, we look at population numbers. So it matters to all of us. Certainly matters to Medicare, Medicaid, et cetera. It's under 10 questions, it's under 10 minutes. This year's different from years past. You can complete it online, you can complete it by mail, you can complete it on the phone. So, every household will start getting a census survey in the mail by mid-March. And that survey will have a code on it, and that code is very important to complete your census survey. So, basically what it's going to ask is, count the population in your household as of April 1st. Well, if you get the survey on March 12th, fill it out and just get it done. But think about who's sleeping in your household as of April 1st. That's how they like to, they like people to think about it. So, if you do not fill out your census survey when it comes to you, in May, you will likely get a census worker knocking on your door and asking you to fill out the census survey. So if you do not want someone knocking on your door, just fill it out when it comes to your mailbox. I'm going to pause for the Commissioners. Do you have any questions about the census?
I have no.
Earl, encourage your staff to fill out the census. Commissioner Hilton, obviously the police at the county, and the Complete Count Committee will continue to encourage awareness in the county. Okay. Next topic to talk about is Georgia's broadband ready program. So, as we talk through this, please ask questions if you need any clarification, and I'll do my best to answer. The state of Georgia created a program called Georgia Broadband Ready in 2018 as a result of legislation being passed at the state level. It was Senate Bill 402 to promote broadband deployment in areas not currently served at a minimum broadband speed of 25 megabits per second download and 3 megabits per second upload. So, that's a detail that we don't have to know specifically. But, this program is something that I would like the county to apply for, and I can apply through, for the program through economic development. I want to talk about why it's important and what it requires. So, you can apply to the program to become a broadband-ready community if a community adopts a model ordinance, which you each have and I can answer questions about, and then an amendment to the 10-year comprehensive plan that we do with the Regional Commission every 10 years. Okay, so what does all this mean and why? If we apply, it shows the state, at a local level, we have taken steps to reduce obstacles to broadband infrastructure investment. Okay, so reducing obstacles can really be addressed in the ordinance. So this ordinance provides a single point of contact for anyone applying for a permit for a broadband network project. And so I have suggested that Marie Woody be that single point of contact since she's already dealing with permitting. The ordinance also sets timelines for reviewing a permitting application and for approval and denial. So, the ordinance does not, does not really do anything except put a single point of contact and a timeline on somebody who might want to come in and expand broadband in the county. Do y'all have questions about the ordinance?
Kristy, that has the potential to really help people that work out of their homes, particularly in rural areas. It also has potential, I think our school system's pretty advanced, but it also gives the kids that live in far out areas where they don't have already current fiber optics, gives them, if we can make that happen eventually for them, that's kind of the first step for them.
And I'm going to talk a little bit more about it, but the goal would be eventually to do anything we can as a government entity to help. And this could do that, right? So, the other piece is amending the comprehensive plan to have a broadband element that shows the community has adopted a strategy that demonstrates the promotion of broadband within the community. It's a fairly easy process. But one thing that they have indicated is important to include in our amended plan is that we include areas that are identified with little to no connectivity in the county, which can be harder to do than one might think. If you look at an FCC map, there are a lot of places in Fannin County that are shown to have coverage when it's not the case. And so the way the FCC looks at that data is, if one person is in a census block that is served, the whole census block, even if it's, let's say, 100 people, that whole census block is shown as served when really 99 people are unserved. So, say that, the state of Georgia, it has a team together and they're looking to identify the gaps. So they're doing what they can to identify the areas that are truly unserved in communities. And so they're planning to have that data to communities over the summer. So my suggestion is that we wait for that more accurate data provided by the state to amend our comprehensive plan so that our comprehensive plan can show where our most needed areas to be served are. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the comprehensive plan piece. So we can't apply to be a broadband-ready community until the ordinance has been adopted and the amendment has been made. And then, then we can apply to be a broadband-ready community. So what does that mean? Right now, it may not mean anything except we are looking at, we are looking at what we can do, right? So eventually, the state of Georgia, not right now, but eventually, may have a pool of funding that they can grant to communities to help expand broadband services. Now, we as a county, we can't put internet lines in the ground. However, if a utility wants to expand to a certain area and put money into it, and we go after a grant, and it would, lots of details that would go into this that I don't know right now, but just talking about the if, what if, we could go after grant money to help expand broadband to places that may need it the most in the future. So, that's why this matters to me, the county. Does that make sense to you all? Okay, so there are, just for your reference, four designated communities in the state already. And there are six applications under review. I just don't want us to get two years, three years down the road and have an opportunity to get funding if the scenario was right and us not be able to if we're not going through these steps.
Kristy, is Gilmore County broadband ready?
No, the counties that are designated are Banks, the city of Woodbury, Evans, and Oglethorpe County.
I saw where Gilmore and Conjunction, ETC, got large USDA grant.
That's correct.
Does that have anything to do with this program?
It doesn't. Utilities can go after those grants, and they look at certain speeds that qualify for the grants. And it's my understanding that the speeds for Fannin County didn't meet the grant requirements for that, so.
Is the grant based on need, county need?
The future grant that would be taxed?
Right.
I think so, but there's not, this is early stages, so there's, but it would be where the most need is.
Have we defined how much need there is in Fannin County as far as...
So, no, as I was mentioning, that's harder to do than one might think because people can say all the time the internet's bad in a certain area, et cetera. But to put that on a map can be difficult. But the state is helping to work on that. And they are working with local communities on getting accurate data through the utilities, E911, et cetera. So more to come on that.
Okay.
So, I think the goal would be for us to be broadband-ready, you know, fourth quarter of this year. But I want us all to be thinking about it.
And you just need us to have to vote on moving forward to the resolution on the broadband.
Yeah, it'd be whatever needs to happen with the ordinance to get the ordinance rolling, if we want to do that now or take a look, that's up to you guys.
So while we recognize that it's nothing that's going to help us immediately, we'll be prepared for any future grants.
Yep.
Is Blue Ridge Power doing that in Union County right now?
They may have a reconnect grant, I'm not certain.
Don't they offer broadband now?
Yes.
Power company?
Yeah. Blue Ridge Mountain EMC. They come into Fannin County, too.
Well, Kristy, I've read all the information you provided, and I'm certainly prepared, the Post Commissioners, we can discuss this and see where they stand on moving forward. But I think this is absolutely a necessity that we put forward with it. So I'm ready to discuss that and see how the Post Commissioners feel on the vote tonight. But I'll need lots to get back to my seat.
I'm sorry, did you have more?
No, well, yeah, I was going to talk after this.
I can settle your other way.
There's no more on that.
You sold me on it, Kristy. These guys are going to be tougher sell than I am. I'm pushing, I've been talking about it since, how long ago was it? We went down to North Georgia and they had the presentation. Been about three years.
I was thinking a year and a half, too.
So it's taken a while, but the state is definitely behind us.
Yes. I'm happy to, if y'all want me to further talk on the phone or speak with you later.
If this ordinance that we have in our package, that's what you need us to vote on if we want to do that? I don't have any more questions. I'll leave it to the Post Commissioners to ask you and see what they think will be the girls. Mr. Patterson, do you have anything further on this?
I think we definitely get to do it and to be ready. You don't need to be slow about something like that. I like to be, for Fannin, to be on the cutting edge of any kind of technology. But I'm kind of a little bit unsure about what we're going to be voting on here, Mr. Hilton. If you can clarify that. Mr. Johnson, you can go ahead and say. How many input on that?
I think if you don't have internet, you don't need it. I'm just joking. I don't see how we could not move forward, so.
And just so you all know, Blue Ridge, so I'm talking to the cities about this, too. So ideally, the cities and the county would follow the same streamlined process. City of Blue Ridge is moving forward, and I'm talking to McHaisville tonight. Morganton is not applicable.
Mr. Dawson, would you explain the path? We could vote on moving forward, then we have to publish it in the local organ, and then before we officially sign it, we have to go through that?
Correct. And you could say that you want to do it, and we would come up with a timeline, and I can have a timeline for you at the next meeting. But it would have to write in paper, and there has to be two hearings on it, and tweaking if it's not, and we could go to the document.
So do we need to sign anything now, or we hang on to it, or what?
Well, there's nothing to sign, even though there's a model sitting there. There's nothing to sign because you haven't had, you haven't published and you haven't had your meeting. So the first step would be to vote that you want to move forward with adopting an ordinance.
Okay, all right. Any more questions? Before I ask for a mo, in fact, I'll make the motion that we move forward to add an ordinance for a broadband-ready community. I'll make the motion, do I hear second?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Is that what you need, Ms. Christie?
Yes, and so I just wanted to mention, last Thursday, when we had terrible rains, we had a flood at our Ada Street building and had great support from the county. Road Department came out, fire, had a fire truck out there. Earl had his hands dirty, Stan came out, so a ton of support to help with quickly alleviating flood challenges. So I wanted to thank, thank you for your support on that. With all the rains that we've had in the past year, in addition to all this rain that we've had in January, we've had significant roof leaks on the Ada Street building. And last month, I called Ed Hawkins, our county maintenance person, just to get, I've had someone out there looking at repairs often, doing repairs throughout the year, but it continues to leak. So I had Ed go put a second set of eyes on it as our county maintenance person. And he, he came back to me last week with a bid to get repairs done, somewhere between eight and ten thousand dollars is the estimate. So my ask is if the county could help with some of that repair.
Okay, all right. Actually, some of that repair?
Or all of it. You can put a new roof on it if you'd like.
Yeah. Well, we're talking about, and Ed talked with me about this, that it doesn't look like it would exceed ten thousand dollars, and that's very much needed. Don't buy out there today, and they have the folks out there doing the cleaning, and that's, you got some jobs out there, too.
Yep.
Be protected, so. What you're asking for is just approval to move forward with the roofing repairs, which should not exceed ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, correct.
All right. Okay. I'll make a motion we do that. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
So Ed has bids on?
Ed, Ed has them, and Stan, I don't know if you know any more about it.
He had, he had a quote from the only company that he could get in contact with that would respond in appropriate time, this one. And they told us, they came to our office and they told us that the cost should not exceed that, and if it did, they would get back to us before moving forward. A lot of it was a problem to get someone out there that you could depend on to do the work in the time that she needed. It's really a kind of emergency, really, with that leak.
It's, there are several leaks in the building that need to be properly addressed. And then, you know, my, my question to Ed and the person, you know, the contractor doing the work is if the leak doesn't fix, what are they responsible for? So I would just want, you know, a proper contractor, something in place.
Do we know who the contractor is?
It's my understanding it's Aaron Allen. And again, I did not go after the bid.
Just so, when all the other roofers say, why didn't I get a chance to bid on that? Yeah, I'll have a look, say, that's the only reason I'm asking. If they have my mind, I'll be busy.
Anything else?
No, sir. Thanks for having me tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Christie. Appreciate all the good work you're doing on the census and the broadband.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot of time put into that.
Thanks.
Really sold it.
Okay, Ms. Caswell, you have our financial report for the end of year?
As Mr. Hilton said, this is the end of the year financial presentation. This is not final, just so everybody knows. There's still, you know, several adjustments that still need to be made. And we'll leave this up here just a little bit. Most everything has been, you know, under budget. The risk management area was a little over. There's gonna be some more expenses, but there's gonna be some more reimbursements on that. And this is just a graphical representation of where your money is being spent. And again, this is, you know, a hundred percent into the budget, and these are just the points of interest. Recreation was over a little bit, but I, that was due to new programs that were approved to be done. EMA was just a little over, and that was mostly due to the new fire station. And everybody else came in, in line into budget on the points of interest here. Right now, I'm showing four percent under budget, but again, I know that's gonna change a little bit once everything is adjusted and done. And our sploesed and lost collections were up quite a bit this year. I'm hoping, so far I've noticed, it keeps going up, so it's a good trend, and I do keep an eye on that every, every month. And I usually do a three or four-year history on that, just to keep, you know, just to keep aware of it, so if something were to go down, or if I've noticed anything going down, we can adjust for it and be prepared for it. And all these numbers are, of course, on the Georgia Department revenue.
Any questions on the financial report, commissioners? Do you have any questions, Mr. Patterson?
Aye, ma'am.
When can we expect the final numbers, adjustments to be?
I will probably get my adjustments done within a couple of months, but then, of course, then I wait for the auditors. They are supposed to come in next, actually, next week to do some testing, but they told me, the new auditor said they probably won't come in until May to do the, you know, the final audit and everything, around the first of May is what they've told me. They're just trying to put us into the rotation.
So at what point should we look at voting up in the budget to equal everything out?
Like I said, I usually wait until the auditors are completely finished before, you know, we do that. But I can get you numbers, you know, like I said, once I get all, once they get ready for the audit, I'll have all my numbers, and then it'd be only what they make adjustments on.
What did we do there last year? Was that in May?
When we amended the budget and everything? Yeah, we did it in May.
Okay.
And as far as the old sploesed, what are we looking like as far as closing it out?
We've already closed the old sploesed out. Remember, I had the, I think it was forty-two dollars or something that was left in the account?
Yeah. Because the, the report shows Public Works of the Old Sploesed has spent six hundred fifty-seven thousand to date, and we're eight forty-two under?
Yeah, but the, when I budgeted, I had budgeted that we would probably spend about a million and a half, and we didn't have that much money left after everything was done. Because when I did the budget, you know, it's early, and Zach spent more money than I anticipated he would. Because we did a lot more paving.
So we need to just disregard the numbers under the old sploesed? Or are we saying those are accurate on this report?
They, they're accurate from what I budgeted and what we spent, yes.
That old sploesed number will go away when you start doing the report for twenty?
Twenty, yes.
So it'll just be two columns in that public works, the general fund and the new sploesed?
Correct.
Current sploesed, yeah.
So the old sploesed is eight hundred forty-two thousand thirty dollars under on the report?
From what I estimated, yes, sir.
So we have any idea what we spent on the old sploesed? Does it hit the six fifty-seven number?
Yes, sir. I thought we would have more money in that account, and the auditors made an adjustment last year. I mean, the money didn't disappear. It went into the new sploesed because of adjustment they made.
So what kind of adjustment was that, then? Any idea?
They had, because of the cutoff, the two months of the cutoff, I had put sploesed money in the old sploesed where it should have been in the new sploesed. So when we did budgets, I thought we had a little more money in the old. I mean, again, it was something I just overestimated. And told Zach, you know, we went, he kind of went by my numbers.
So Zach's done good. He's eight hundred forty-two thousand dollars under. He's done good. Or this one's reported, he's done very well. You don't even have to work next year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Caswell.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number nine, Mr. Graham. Come on down and explain this memorandum of agreement.
So this is a memorandum of agree, memorandum of agreement between the U.S. Army Garrison Fort Benning and the counties of Dawson County, Fannin County, Gilmer, Hall, Lumpkin, Union, and White. And what this is, it's just a agreement that we will help each other if we have some sort of a large event, disaster, plane crash, whatever happens, where we might need assistance from the Army. I know at one time, a long time ago during the blizzard that we had, they, they sent out umpires to help get people transported and things. We might need assistance with, you know, if we're just overwhelmed with our own resources. In addition, they would ask that we would provide assistance at their Camp Merrill. They had a large event there, some sort of attack or something, where we could provide medical assistance, firefighting capabilities, that type of thing. And it can either be in the form of personnel, equipment, anything like that that we would need or that they would need from us.
We're talking about the ranger camp up at Camp Merrill?
Yes.
Is anybody dumb enough to attack a bunch of rangers up there in the mountains? I don't know if they're gonna need any help from us.
I know one time, and this, this agreement has been in place before. This is just a renewal, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and it's, they do it every ten years. I know at one time, there was a Cobra helicopter that crashed in our county, and we assisted them with that. Just that type of thing. The, there is no cost to us or to them for emergency response for the first seventy-two hours. After that, or if there's some sort of planned huge event that they would like us to participate in or vice versa, then each, each county or agency would have the option if they wanted to, to bill for that service, but that would be something, would be pre-planned in advance.
Was there an existing agreement in place?
I believe there was. I know that we had one at one time. I could not find a copy of it. But I believe this is renewed every ten years.
Every ten years?
Yeah, I believe, I believe it's, the agreement is for a ten-year period. And actually, the last two or three pages of that don't apply to us. It's an addendum for Lumpkin County only. They have an automatic aid agreement with Camp Merrill on Fire, Fire Fighting, that they automatically respond to help them on the fires. That does not apply to us. They're asking that all counties, they want to be commissioned, fire chief, EMA, and the chief law enforcement officer, the sheriff. And I spoke with our sheriff. He had a copy of it. I sent him a copy. He had no problem with it from his end as well.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on this MOU? Mr. Patterson, anything to use, or?
So this is gonna be for how many years? I believe it's ten years. I mean, maybe, I'd consider nine or ten years. It has to be relooked at by, I think every three years has to be updated and stuff, but the agreement is for a ten, I believe it is in a ten-year. And actually, the agreement would not need to be signed tonight. They want to actually have a signing with all the counties and all the... They want to actually have a signing with all the counties involved at some point after it's approved by the commission.
Got any questions, Commissioner Johnson? All right. I'll ask for a motion that we approve this memorandum of agreement between the U.S. Army Garrison at Fort Benning and Fannin County. I'll ask for a motion.
Make the motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. Item ten, do we need exact decision?
I don't know, chairman.
Okay. Before I ask for adjournment, I want to throw out some thanks to Emergency Services and Public Works, Tri-State, Blue Ridge, EMC, and any of our other folks that are involved with communications and power, keeping the roads going. We've had a tough week, the last week or so, with this torrential rain, and then the snowstorm that we had Saturday. I know a lot of our Public Works guys were out Saturday all day. How many crews did you have out, Zach, immediately on Saturday morning?
Crews, that's six out.
How many?
Six out, six.
Six. Okay. Six crews. You guys jumped on it real quick. Had a lot of compliments back from the public on that. So it looks like we may not be through this week. I hope we are, but hoping the rain won't be quite so bad. Other than that, gentlemen, I don't have anything else to say. Ask for a motion for adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. Mead, gentlemen.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Thank you, folks, for coming.